I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, April 16, 2019. Is there anybody in this crowd with something to speak to that is not on the agenda?
Somebody in the back.
Anybody in the luxury boxes over there? All right. We have no minutes, we have no ANRs, we have no public hearings. Moving on to new business, the first item is, "The Board to Receive an Update and Overview of the Cannabis Equity Amendment and Request to Schedule Public Hearing on May 7, 2019." Someone here speak to that?
I can speak to that, if that's okay.
Okay. Can you please, yes, please. Usually we have to twist arms to get people to go up to the lectern. You're begging for it. Look at that, yeah.
Oh, there he is.
Perfect timing. Owen's just starting hour one of three of his presentation.
Nice. There you go, you got the laptop ready to go. Send him.
Thank you, members of the planning board. City Planner. City Planning Board Clerk, is that technically the appropriate appellation?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. Owen Zarrett, East Hampton City Councilor-at-Large, also accompanied by another member of the ordinance Subcommittee, Margaret Peg Coniff, City Councilor-at-Large also. I'm here to give you a brief presentation on the proposed cannabis equity amendment and then answer any questions you may have. This was born out of a model of what some folks over at Somerville were doing. As you may or may not know, it's been the mission of the CCC in my discussions with Commissioner Tidal to offer opportunities for individuals who may otherwise be marginalized by the cannabis industry and previously, when cannabis was illegal in the state, be marginalized by arrests that seemed to be higher for certain groups, especially minorities and people in underprivileged areas. The Cannabis Control Commission created both an economic empowerment program as well as a social equity program on the state level for individuals, and I can, individuals again, who are marginalized and lived in areas of disproportionate impact in terms of arrests for cannabis possession and such. So, I took it upon myself to try to create something in our city which has been so open and had such foresight in terms of good and general ordinance for cannabis retail, recreational cannabis retail. And I wanted to expand some of these categories. I thought it was appropriate to include the categories that the state had defined, but also to take a slightly broader approach on the local level in regards to what I consider equity, that being opening up special permits to minority business enterprises, women business enterprises, and most importantly, locally owned businesses defined by individuals who have lived in East Hampton for greater than five years. So, the goal here is to try to allow individuals who have, like I've said, who are typically otherwise marginalized by being able to own cannabis retail businesses, to be able to have access to a certain line of permits that's reserved just for these specific groups. As you could see in the definitions, the East Hampton Equity applicants, economic empowerment applicants, social equity program applicants, minority business, women business enterprises, and again, local residents. And the idea is to create two more licenses. We currently have a total of six, special permits. I'm using license in lieu of special permit, but I think we understand in our local process. I'm sure especially the members of the planning board understand that we have a special permit process, not a local licensing process. So, creating two more special permits for cannabis recreational retail to create a total pool of eight. Out of those eight, to set one aside from the original six to create three for equity applicants. And the idea would be to have an applicant, when they come forward with their application, to be able to submit kind of a why, to explain, to submit a cover letter to explain the category they're applying under, a summary of how they meet equity criteria, and to provide an appropriate documentation. And what this would do is would kind of, A, put them to the top of the class, or the top of the stack, so to speak, and also kind of excel the process in which, in terms of the special permitting versus non-equity applicants. I think that it would be great in the spirit of our city in terms of our progressive values and as well as kind of being welcoming and opening our businesses, especially in this industry, to people who may not otherwise have access because they'd be shut out by big business, as we've seen already happening across the state. I think this would be a great step forward for us and kind of continue to put East Hampton on the map in regards to what we've been doing already in the very short period of time that we've had a legal cannabis industry here. Questions?
Can I ask you, the shutout by big business part is intriguing to me because I know there's been some issues at the state level, both with sort of the licensing generally and with sort of the idea of the social equity stuff where it's out of state, big business coming in, and even where there may be a forward-facing applicant, that they're really the money behind it that's sort of controlling it. And also a concern in the social equity side that that may result in just sort of finding a poster person who's going to be a front man or a woman for this project. How do we avoid that? Because obviously, some of that is going to be unavoidable, but is that something we want to give preference and priority to where it's not really like an authentic, you know, social equity empowerment kind of situation?
I think that's a great question. That's something I've struggled with throughout this process is really how do you, how do you create a process where you can actually prove that the faces of the front people of a business coming forward are really the major stakeholders?
Right.
And I don't know. I think potentially, you know, I thought in some of the language that we've included, we talked specifically with, in regards to minority business enterprises and women business enterprises, there are state-level definitions for that. And maybe there has to be some sort of accompanying documentation establishing the actual financials around these businesses. I'll say kind of as an aside, as you mentioned, you know, the, right now, there's a fight on the state level actually because the economic empowerment program had a very finite time. It was open and closed. And of, I forget how many people it was, but of all the people who graduated from that program or were certified by that program, only two people, I think, have been granted licenses of a much larger number. And part of the problem with that is access to funds. As we all know, you can't typically, you can't get a loan for this business. You have to go and look for investors. And unfortunately, you know, people of color don't necessarily have, in some of these situations, and from areas of disproportionate impact, don't have the access to investors that, or as quickly as some other people might who are opening these businesses. So, I know I'm digressing, but I don't know how to, I don't know how to solve that issue.
Yeah. I mean, I ask it not knowing, I mean, I don't have an answer either. I think it's hard. I know there was a big thing in the Globe a couple of weeks ago sort of about these equity firms that have sort of bought up all these entities, and they're not technically stakeholders, but they have all their debt at 15% interest, and they're at least claiming that they can control how these entities operate. It's so hard to figure out because I know one of the things they're talking about at the state level is the possibility of the state lending money to some of these applicants, so maybe that's a way around it, but...
What about your number five? And you're staying here, if I'm understanding correctly, that you have to apply for one of these five. And I have a bunch of questions, so you know about this, but that number five that you have in here says, "Owned by an East Hampton resident or entities with a majority of at least 51% of ownership made up of East Hampton residents." So, I mean, someone could come in and claim that stake and be an outsider and not be able to apply in this. Although I think your question is still right. What kind of proof are we requiring in our special permit process to make sure that's true? I mean, do we need, I don't even know how we prove someone's residency. That's something you would have to tackle.
Well, and that's one of the things, you know, they've talked about at the state level is sort of, I think what some of these firms are hoping for and getting is that we're kind of overwhelmed in dealing with the, you know, buffers and things like that and not doing a deep dive. Because I think like what constitutes ownership is a big issue too. Like, you're not necessarily a name on the application, but if you're the lender that has all the funds and owns everything, you may still have that kind of control. That part gets really hard. I just don't know how to cross that bridge.
No, it's true. I mean, in a more traditional model where you basically have a loan, I mean, you're not necessarily the owner either.
No.
The bank ultimately is the owner if you default on your payments. Yeah, I mean, that's an excellent question. It's one I've constantly gone back to in formulating this. And I don't know if maybe there's, maybe there, we should, consideration should be for another amendment somewhere in here with some sort of proof of ownership.
I can toss an idea out if you'll allow, and I'm hoping you'll correct me.
I'm ready.
You've gone into this much deeper, and I know much less, and feed me, Seymour. Five items here, and like I said, I have a ton of questions, but two of the items here seem to come with, or one, it said, first one is an economic empowerment application certified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, CCC. Another is the social equity program participants. They have to participate in the program, which means they have documents of participation. And then the minority business enterprise as well means they have to be certified by the Massachusetts Supplier Diversity Office, which I looked up. Those three come with proof.
Correct.
Now, the last two, the WBEs is one category. When I was looking at the CCC, I believe it was, they had a bunch of different categories. They had veteran category, they had the women's category, a wide range of categories in there. My understanding from what I saw there was that the minority, the women's business enterprise was a category in that allotment, not sort of a separate entity or some other organization. Am I correct in that? That it's a category?
It's a, you mean in terms of the equity application?
Where it says, number four, women's business enterprise.
Right, correct.
You have to prove that you are that.
Correct.
But that's a definition of one of the items that was in the CCC's people that apply for, do you understand what I'm saying?
It's a state, it's a state license. You actually get a number of, and so you license number it as a WBE or an NBE.
Or a veteran, or one of, so you can get one of the licensed categories. So, for a women's business enterprise, you can get, it could be required from the CCC that you have that category, that you've applied and gone through that process. Is that, are we wrong about that?
No, I believe you do. That's right, that's the certification.
I believe there is, and speaking to some of the individuals I consulted with about this, I do believe there's state certification because it references that.
Yeah.
Forgive me if I don't have the exact answer, but I'm Googling it right now.
Well, in the engineering industry, we use women and minority business enterprises companies all the time, and we ask them for their certification because we have to prove to the state that we're using a certified minority business or women-owned business because we have to show that 7% of our project is a minority business, 10 is a women-owned business so that we can get funding from the state.
So, we've got four out of five that comes with certification, which is great. I mean, you know, looking at it in terms of a special permit process, that really helps us because then we can just, it's a checkbox. Do you have it? Do you not have it?
Right. Right. The concern is that that's a front person for equity firm that's financing dozens of people. Like, that's the part that's hard to get behind. And that's the part I'm literally just trying to think of solutions for. Because I think you can verify that the front person is certified for all of these things. It's just whether or not they're the actual person who's benefiting from the program.
I mean, I guess you could say that about anyone, even on the, certainly on the non-equity side, they come forward as the owner and they're just the, they're just the...
Figurehead.
Figurehead.
Yeah.
And they're not really the, you know, the actual financial, they have very little financial stake, you know, skin in the game.
And isn't it up to these other organizations that are providing the certification to sort of go through that vetting process, and it wouldn't be on us to make that?
Well, they're just vetting the applicant, so it's not the, I mean, I think what they're finding is that a lot of these licenses right now are controlled by a small number of national and international equity firms that are, that are behind the scenes. And maybe the answer is there is no perfect way to do this, and this is better than nothing. But I think in most cases, we're not giving priority to these kinds of applicants. So, the question is, if we're trying to give priority to these kinds of applicants to give them an advantage, but they're not the ones benefiting from it, is there a way we can try to weed out people that might be trying to take advantage of it? There you go, I got one in.
It's a tough question.
So, I don't know, I'm literally, you know, we're at the, we're at the sort of...
It's a good question, and I'd be curious, I mean, I could probably put a pin in that and talk to people on the, because I'm sure that, I mean, obviously, this is a discussion on the state level as they're looking to, you know, as they rolled out, yes, as they rolled out kind of these initiatives that they, it's across the Commonwealth, this is obviously an issue that planning boards and licensing boards are having everywhere with their charming city councilors. That, yeah, I don't, I don't know. So, I could, I could call the CCC and probably get a good answer for you on that because it's not like this is isolated to our discussion.
Yeah, I think they're going through the same process, trying to figure this out.
Right, right.
So, why would we give up one of the six licenses that we have already existing to add into this? What's the logic behind that?
Well, because even with the model I'm proposing, five and three, we're still not at equity, right? Equity is equal. So, at least we're getting there. You know, initially, in some early discussions with just random people, they said, "Well, why not set aside one?" Well, that's certainly not equitable. You know, so, and two is getting there, but still two to six. Yeah, it's still two to six. I just thought at least we were, it was making an effort. And I think to some degree, it's kind of a token, there's another one.
Okay.
Yeah. Of kind of giving something up, so to speak, in the, in the interest of kind of trying to, you know, adhere to this philosophy. So, I mean, ideally, if I, if I, we could go back and do this from day one, I'd say three and three, or four and four. I mean, that's true equity, and that's why I stipulated that if we choose to add more special permits later on at some point, that we have to approach an equal ratio before we then give, then we allow more special permits for non-equity applicants.
Would there be a sort of a fallback after that? I like imagine a scenario where we have, you know, someone who wants to come in who is not a social equity applicant to use one of our licenses, and we don't have anyone in line for the social equity program? Would there be a, would you contemplate a way to sort of say, "Okay, it's been six months, now you can," or?
I think we had two years. I think it's in the language, it's two years that will be reviewed. Because especially two, unfortunately, this pool of applicants, as you've kind of touched on, if they're, if they're doing it, if they're doing it through finding, they're really finding their own financing, it's going to take a lot more time. And so, you know, it's not unrealistic for a few years to go by to try to gather up all those investors or raise that money individually. So, we had, we had agreed on two years, kind of a review of the process.
Is that in here somewhere too? Oh, there it is. The 101044, Cannabis Retail Permit, okay, hold on, let me read that.
Yeah.
The City Council may from time to time review this section and amend it to add additional retailers. In City Council ordinance, some committees shall review the appropriation of cannabis retail special permits every two years. So, that means that if someone comes in and they can't go in, somehow Jeff's going to bring it to you and say, "It's been two years, it's time for you to review this." Is that the process?
Or just every two years, you would have to sit down and look at it and say, "Do we still think it makes sense to block out these two for social equity when we have nobody interested right now and we've got lots of people waiting for regular ones?"
Right, I think it would be a discussion to have.
Yeah.
But I think that, you know, obviously, the key would be going forward to kind of be to adhere to these standards and hopefully, you know, unless someone's really banging down the door to kind of hold on to these for the appropriate applicants.
Have you been informed of the applications that have come before us before, just as part of the process? Do they come before the ordinance Subcommittee? Is there a process in, so that process doesn't exist?
Well, but this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be the applicants coming before us. This would be, this would be asking to revisit the ordinance as it stands in terms of the, in terms of the, because the actual ordinance is the allotments of...
So, we could have four people that want to come in, none of them are equity, and they'll wait for your two-year review, for you to modify the law, and somehow, maybe you guys will ask us, "Is there anyone waiting?", or ask Jeff, and that'll be part of your process. Okay, now we know we have four people waiting, and maybe we do something, maybe we don't. That's how you're visioning it?
I mean, I think, so, I did, I didn't mean to jump in on this, but it's related to this point, but there is the actual language that you've submitted in front of the board, and then I also, they have in front of them the entire section 10.10 with the new language inserted. So, I think, I can see some people looking at the new language inserted, and some people are looking at what you provided. So, this is the new language.
And the latter.
So, you know, I think that there is, there's a statement in here that says, "The City Council may from time to time review this section and amend it to add retailers." I mean, that is inherent in the City Council's ability to amend from time to time the zoning ordinance anyway.
Right.
So, I think to the point is, "City Council ordinance Subcommittee shall review the appropriation of cannabis retail establishments every two years." I mean, where I would like to be in this position is if there is an applicant strongly desiring to get into East Hampton and is blocked by that two years, they're, I'm, they're going to, I would like to be able to send them to the ordinance Subcommittee. They're going to be there for two years, waiting for some, we should talk through a process with that. Doesn't currently exist.
That sounds wise.
But I mean, I think, I think this goes back to the point that a lot of non-equity applicants might have the opportunity to appear and apply much sooner than an equity-type applicant, and that's, that's the problem.
Right, so part of the advantage that we're giving the communities we're trying to empower with this is the ability to take a little longer to get their stuff together.
But there's the disadvantage that you just said is that even when the CCC did it, they only had two applicants. So, the net effect of this, hopefully, providing some justice as well, but it could be a dramatic slowdown in the number of applicants we have, to perhaps even a stall.
It could, but we're also actually technically adding on to the total number of special permits.
We're increasing the number.
So, it's not really a net loss, maybe of one for the city in total, but in...
Unless we don't get any equity applicants.
Right.
In which case, it's a complete stall.
Well, yeah.
It's a stall.
But there's only one left right now anyways, whether you're equity or otherwise, so it's...
Well, there's six, and we've only had...
We've only...
We've got three. And there's a fourth, which is the pet place that hasn't come before us yet.
So, we got more.
I was just doing a quick tally of that. So, if I may, so currently, Inta has received a retail special permit, the Verb is Herb has received a retail special permit, and Herbology has received a retail special permit. There are other two, there are two other applicants who have made significant effort post-community agreement and filing applications at the Cannabis Commission, so that's holistic at the Fersa Flying and Appical, which was on Industrial Parkway. There was always, there was always one more unaccounted-for slot in the six that no one's made any significant effort towards, towards entering. So, at the moment, if I may not speak too much out of turn, at the moment, there is not a sixth entity that has invested time and effort in East Hampton right now.
So, that would make me nervous if we take one more and bring it over to the equity side, or the, whatever the, yeah, the equity applicant.
I feel much more comfortable if, like Jeff said, because I share, I share that, if there was some process that you built in so that if time passed and people really were being stalled and we weren't seeing any activity, that you had a process in your committee to get us through the logjam.
Well, we do. I mean, it's a two-year review, but I mean, and also to speak...
It's a long, that's a long time.
But it's also typically...
I think that's a feature, not a bug. I think that's the whole point, is that you're giving more time for these people to get this program, to get involved in this program at a timeline that they might be...
Yeah, I think it's more amenable to adding to these two permits, special permits for the equity applicant, but without taking away a permit for the non-equity, just because...
Jeff, can I just ask procedurally where we are with this? Because it's not a joint public hearing. It's a report from the ordinance, so we need to schedule a public hearing, a joint hearing? Is that the idea?
That's the idea. One of the desirable outcomes, and there's a draft legal ad, I mean, there are two potential amendments before the planning board and ordinance at the same time. One is about the Mill District, and then there would be this cannabis equity. I think initially, the goal would be to have this opportunity with, for a conversation in a meeting.
Yep.
For the planning board to determine if a joint public hearing was, was ready and ordered, and we would be aiming for discussion as May 7, where the language as generally outlaid would be the subject of the public hearing, depending on the rest of this discussion, if the planning board feels like you're ready or would like to make tweaks to the language before we legally advertise it.
That's what I'm wondering, if we really want to get into the back and forth here, or if it's better to sort of wait until we have, I mean, we are at a public hearing still, even though it's not a joint public hearing on this issue.
Hopefully, allow me a few more questions because it may pave the path to make that public hearing.
Please do.
I would consider this a public meeting for purposes, but, yeah, so the formal next step would be for the planning board and ordinance to hold a joint public hearing. We just had this opportunity for some introduction and discussion first.
And I'm more than eager and pleased to entertain any of Mr. Zarrett's questions.
I hate that formality.
I'll allow Mr. Zarrett.
Thank you. Listen, the Supplier Diversity Program, the SDP, you've identified two of their categories, the Minority Business Enterprise, number three, and the Women's Business Enterprise, number four. But I couldn't help but notice that they had other categories in there, and I wanted to see if it was, if you felt it was sort of implied otherwise, or if it was an unintentional exclusion that you intend to correct. And I'll be specific in that they also have the service-disabled veteran business, SDV OBEs, the veteran business enterprises, VBEs, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender business enterprises, LGBTBEs, and disability-owned business enterprise, DOBEs. Those weren't named in here, and I was just wondering if it was an intentional or unintentional.
It was not intentional. I considered including veterans for sure, and I actually did not know, and thank you for pointing it out to me, that there was specifically a GLTQ category as well. You know, that's the beauty of these processes, is nothing's set in stone. It's, it's, it's open to input from everybody, from, on every level. And so, I mean, if it was, if it behooved the planning board or members of ordinance or members of the public to request that we add that in, it's certainly reasonable to be open to discuss that.
May I just...
Please proceed.
May I ask, where are you reading that from? What is, like, where are you... I'm at the mass.gov, and it's the Learn About Supplier Diversity Program. I can forward you that if I can, but it's the, it's part of the Supplier Diversity's information from the state website.
I mean, one option would be to place some of these categories that fall under that broader umbrella, just under that one umbrella.
I was going to suggest the same. It was where I was going next.
Well, I mean, we're like-minded individuals.
But I really see kind of where you were going, though. You called out some things that are critically important. You know, you did say minority, which it should, in my mind, you know, include a lot of that, and the women, which I think is hugely important. But I love, and this is not really a question, this is a statement to the ordinance Subcommittee, I love your number five. It's about making East Hampton stand out, keeping it stand out. It's the people in this community that make that happen. This is why we're doing so all right now, because we have an amazing talent pool. We have an amazing population. And by making the majority 51% ownership from East Hampton residents as an option for one of these, I think that's just, that's just magnificent. Personally, I almost feel like the first four are certification criteria that you could bring to us, and I almost feel like the fifth, the number five, should be part of the two things that are required. One of the first four and East Hampton. That's just me.
Well, that's an interesting, so, yeah, to go back, I mean, I think, I think that it's very, I always support local business, right? And so, what's local, what's more local than local business is local business owners. So, I agree with you that there's something very important about number five. Unfortunately, I don't disagree with you on merit, some of the other categories, like for instance, the economic empowerment categories, you might be hard-pressed just because of our socio-demographic makeup in East Hampton, we might be, it might be hard...
You're right.
...for overlap there. That said...
We wouldn't get any more applicants at all.
That said, though, perhaps you could say for, not one and two necessarily, but that the other, the other, what was the umbrella term, I'm sorry, that you used?
The SDP, Supplier Diversity Program.
I mean, potentially, potentially, one option would be to then, so, you know, one and two, and then SDP and East Hampton resident. I mean, that would be a potential option.
See, I love these, and I really believe them, but the problem is ultimately, I think that the net effect of this is likely to be, just based on the reality that it's hard, we're trying to find ways, you know, and putting these rules in is great, but it's really not getting at the heart of the issue, which is, you know, money. And what we'll probably end up doing with this whole thing is slowing things down dramatically and stalling, which is going to please some people, but I'm not sure it's what we really want as a community.
Well, again, it's not necessarily slowing things down if, with the exception of removing that one license from the current pool of six, we're actually adding more on, right?
Right.
So, I mean, I guess we're slowing things down if you look at the six that we have now, again, one of the, which is not claimed, and one or two of which may not even come to fruition, so...
I'm going to choose to believe.
Well, I guess, if I, I'll jump in on that. I mean, I guess it may not be slowing it down, may not be the proper way to describe. It would be potentially putting a pause because we're not moving at rapid pace right now, but we have two applicants that have achieved certain statuses with investment in East Hampton, and that if, upon passing this, either they'd have to drop off, which is conceivable, or we'd pause for two years on accepting any other not... on accepting any other, not, anything other than a.
But they're part of the first five, so they wouldn't have to.
But then we would pause.
The one after, the six.
It would be the pause on any few, so in, in my world, there have not been the number of calls or inquiries or meetings that were happening eight months ago.
Okay.
But I just want to be clear that if this is passed, then my calls, meetings or inquiries will be that, as of right now, there's a pretty big hurdle for someone new to come into East Hampton. So they would have to hold a host community meeting, hold a community outreach meeting. Sorry, I haven't brushed up on this in a while. They would have to execute a host community agreement with the mayor's office and they would need to apply to the Cannabis Commission. And then they would need to apply for such permit before they could beat out the other two. So it would be, I would, I would just present it in terms of pausing new applications because I think it's slowing down, I think.
Or potentially, or potentially adding three more licensed businesses.
It would definitely encourage a new focus, a new set of people who would potentially look to East Hampton.
Well, and in certain ways too, you know, there's, as we all know, there's kind of this level of uncertainty on the state level, like what's next, what's happening with delivery and social consumption, even what's happening with retail. Is that going to evolve, that the way that they're going to allow this? And so in some ways, it kind of buys us time to kind of move with the process as opposing to kind of jumping, jumping in too quickly also. I mean, I've just put that out there. It allows us to kind of wait to see what the state's doing. I know that initially we thought that social consumption was going to be kind of its own separate license and I think it looks like that still, but there's talks of it being kind of a special retail. And so, you know, that, if it gets, if it all gets rolled in, I already used that one. But, you know, I don't know, it's just, it's, it's a way of kind of, it is a good, I like, I like what Planner Bag said, that it's, it's a way of pausing and I think right now, especially with all the rapid interest, it still allows for interest, but allows for interest at a, at a rate that's, that's going parallel and not faster than what's happening on the state level.
A slower burn.
A slower burn.
And I'll just recap, because I think when you summarize my statement, I would, I would back off my own statement a little bit where it might be pausing certain activities for a certain group, but it could be opening up or freeing up opportunities for someone else. So I think, I think in just one light, it is potentially could be considered pausing, but another, another perspective would be opening up new opportunity that doesn't currently.
Which is actually, I mean, that's the purpose of the whole concept at the state level and locally, is to give some of these disadvantaged groups an opportunity to be involved and not get beat out because someone can move faster in that field.
Do we have two or three potential applicants for this kind of special permit?
Not that have come before.
That we, that we know of?
I've had no specific discussions, but I don't know how meaningful that is knowing that there's no program in place to, to encourage it either, so.
Right, but there's no program to discourage it, so they could come.
I mean, I think that the data is at the state.
Already we have open.
I mean, I understand what's hap, from what I read about what's happening on the state level is that the, the people who did get in during the economic empowerment period and get certified, I think are getting, are so turned off because, so you get the certification, but then someone with a ton of money just comes in like that. They've, they have everything they need. You don't have time to assemble, you know, your, your investors or, or prepare everything. And so.
The entry cost is high.
Yeah, people just throw their hands up. Yes.
I mean, I think, I think that there, so I think there's a, there's a, so East Hampton has been described as marijuana-forward for a couple of different reasons. I think that this would continue that path. But I think, I mean, I watched a lot of the state process unfold and we must remind each other that the regulations were initially set up totally askew. They were set up to give medical marijuana companies a year up. I mean, we're, we're now two years into this and we're kind of backing off those mistakes that were made at the state level. So I think it continues to keep East Hampton progressing to allow these opportunities to happen, which I think is great. I had a couple of quick questions about, if I can jump in. So under the proposed language, there's reference to economic empowerment applicants and there's a pretty clear definition articulated in that CMR. Then my question is whether this minority business, women's business and any other potential diversity program applicants, are we talking about 51% ownership by those entities or enterprises?
Yeah, so I, I believe that couched, couched within the definition of any one of those enterprises is a certain majority stakeholder.
That's part of that definition.
As determined by the SDP?
Correct.
The Supplier Diversity Program, sorry.
So it's fairly easy to show that someone has been an East Hampton resident for over these five years. That's pretty easy, city clerk kind of stuff. But I think it doesn't answer the ownership structure question that, that Jesse raised earlier. So I don't know how much information we would even be able to get upon application. That's kind of question number one. And question number two is whether the board has any desire to create extremely beneficial advantages. So right now, the way the zoning is set up is that you have to have achieved a complete application with the Cannabis Commission to even make your local application. We've had a couple of discussions here and there. There would be more, I would say there would be significantly more work at either the planning department or at the planning board, but there would be a potential opportunity to allow them to make a local application first, to figure out if the location works, to figure out if it's going to be locally approved before they make their application to the commission. So I think that was in some other draft that we had, there was one other draft I've seen.
Interesting.
So right now, this is structured so that the applicant would still have to go to the Cannabis Commission first, secure a complete application and then come. So there's one option is to keep that program as it is, or.
Is there a catch-22 to any of that? I apologize. Things like the SDP, did they require the CCC application in order to get their categorization? I'm, I don't really know.
No, it's a different cert, it's a different certification. I mean, my only thought about, I mean, the reason we, the reason we required the application first or the state-level application first was more about fairness in the applicant pool, right? So I think it's great to give an incentive to these groups versus the public at large, but if you have, I mean, it forces any one of the applicants to sort of show some legitimacy, whereas you could otherwise get your application in and whether intentional or not, basically sit on that license where it's locked up. That's the only concern about that, where you can sort of not having, do the due diligence first and it gives you the advantage over the public at large, but it might also stop a legitimate application from another diversity program that, when they're locked in with their application, I don't know. It's worth thinking about.
Just put a time limit on it. Put a time limit on it. Six months, four months, whatever. Make rent on our side and then they, they got so much time to apply. If they don't, they lose it.
There might be other incentives we could consider to reducing distances from other facilities like it, other things we have in the legislation, in the, in the zoning that, that could be tweaked for these individuals.
Can you do that?
Well, I mean, I think every tweak will, will add another layer of complexity when we get to public hearing, but. Yeah, I think the setbacks have been historically, in the past two years, have been more sensitive than other topics.
In other words, we're putting up a difficult, a more difficult route to getting this passed.
Well, also I think that, you know, we spent a lot of time hammering out the sort of on-the-ground details of applications and businesses and I think we arrived at those standards sort of for a reason and that may not be where we want to give. I think procedural stuff is a little easier for us. I just want to make sure it's not going to hurt other applicants.
One of the reasons, one of the other reasons we did sort of a rigorous application threshold was at the time, there was a, an extremely large demand on East Hampton and processes moved very fast. And other communities were getting speculative applicants and just getting bombarded. Planning boards, hearing after hearing after hearing of these applicants just coming to scope out your town and then they would be making up, you know, an application two towns over and just speculating out all their opportunities. And so we put the threshold there to make sure that they were, you know, dead serious about committing to East Hampton.
To nip that in the bud.
Right. I was trying to avoid any good puns, but, so it's just one more thing. I, I think it could be something that really provides an opening, an opportunity to, to, I mean, for discussion, to allow them to apply locally. It would give them more confidence moving through what is a complicated process.
I agree and I think you're right about the setbacks. We shouldn't modify that. We don't want to see this whole thing go up in smoke.
But it increases your burden. It increases the burden. You might get an applicant who is far less prepared than you've seen before.
Right. So I guess we can open this up to some public comment now, at least get some thoughts from people before we have our full public hearing. Is there anyone here with any comments?
Thank you for your time. Patient intolerance.
Good job, committee. Good job. Good work.
Never shag Rema. Please come share.
Hi, good evening. My name is Karima Risk and I'm an East Hampton resident. I'm just kind of going to speak to a general nature. I didn't prepare anything. But I strongly support the equity provisions, having been someone who is seriously looking as an East Hampton resident, someone who seriously meets the criteria of the economic empowerment program, although I was not able to get the certification in the two months, or the two-week span it was opened. But it's really, really important. I think it's essential. I think it's extremely urgent as well because there is limited opportunity and I think most of us know that to realistically get these opportunities, we have to get on the ground. And realistically, how quickly you can go through the permitting and licensing process is often a factor of money and advantage. And so I, I know a lot of us have seen the articles, the trends. For those who haven't, there have been really good articles documenting power structures and ownership in the media. And I think, I just think this is an essential issue that we, this was an issue while it was discussed in the last iteration of our zoning ordinance. It was one that I think that was overlooked and the message from the state was, we got to walk before, you got to run, we got to get this retail market up and running. And so people didn't really carefully weigh out these issues. And so I think an unintended consequence is that there's been a monopoly of these multi-state organizations. And pattern after pattern, it doesn't matter where you are geographically, it's in here in East Hampton and it's elsewhere in Boston as well. So I think it's paramount that people look at that. I think, I know from conversations with the commission and also having looked at this issue that the municipalities individually have the authority to set whatever standards they want in a broader sense, not for the terms, the exact terminology defined in the, by the Cannabis Control Commission, but for example, if our community supports veterans, that's something we can do. And that certainly is something that will amend, I imagine, with the public board hearing and also the latter city council hearing. So I think that's really important for us to have a conversation as a community, as a lot will come out. I know in Summerville, for example, there are some craft cooperatives and farmers there, so that was important for them. They felt like those folks would get consideration. There's also a lot of innovation going on too, to the point about ownership. I know a discussion that's happening in two days in Hoyok that I'm taking part in with the commissioner, Steve Hoffman, is actually challenging people as to how small organizations and big ones can actually work together. Certainly, as part of the process, people can submit documents, everything from ownership and documents with the Secretary of State to full applications submitted with the Cannabis Control Commission. That is very detailed and includes detailed financial documents, as well as you can even ask for additional contracts, management contracts, other contracts. So there's a lot of discretion. You do indeed have the authority and that's something the Cannabis Control Commission has explicitly stated. And I just would love to see us continue to be a leader on this issue. I think many of us would rather see, at least some of these folks have, our neighbors, our fellow residents have an opportunity, have a shot at this. And so one of the comments that we heard from the public was that things are going so soon. Like a lot of our neighbors didn't even realize hearings had been held. And one great consequence of trying to make the local, the, to enshrine protection for local residents and other minority groups is that it does carefully slow down the process a little bit. It's not rushing to get up to get the retail market so quickly, but it allows us to be thoughtful in how we give out those licenses or those permits rather than, you know, before we even realize it, there's five out of the six are already gone and that's really the history. So I think that's something to look at. In this process and my new role, I won't be able to comment about the number of license caps, so I'm going to refrain from that discussion as well, just as a matter of that. But if anybody has questions too, this is an area in which I'm passionate about and it doesn't just end here. I'm happy to invite people to come talk to me outside. And there's a lot of good resources as well in the audience, so I look forward to hearing debate. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there someone else?
Roger Anderson, East Hampton resident, and I just want to say I strongly support this suggestion of making the East Hampton resident like an overarching requirement with the other, over the other categories. And I agree with maybe not the minority business-owned category because that might be too limiting, but I think it could be overarching over all the other ones. And then regarding these questions about the, who really owns the operation and the shadow owners, I don't have enough business or legal expertise to know, but I'm wondering if there's some way that could be defined instead of just ownership, also control, some kind of corporate control who has that. And I have no idea if that's.
That's sort of what they've done at the state level and then there's sort of been, these entities have kind of, sort of talking out of both sides of their mouth whether they have control or not. So there's been sort of federal filings that suggest that they're advertising that we have control over, you know, X dozen licenses and then they're saying, no, 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 we just hold a note on this money that we lent them.
No, no, I think it's a, it's a good question and I do hope you all watch that as it goes forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have just one last question, then I'm done on the topic because I know we need to move on. One of the things that was in here is something that I personally feel very strongly about and that was about advantages for people who had had drug sentencing and incarceration. But in my mind, that always applied to cannabis. But I went to the CCC site and I went to the resources that you said here to see if it also applied to, say, fentanyl dealers, which is a very different thing in my mind. Owen? Sorry.
Pay attention.
So I'm wondering, I couldn't find any reference anywhere as to whether these drug convictions really apply toward cannabis as opposed to applying to something that I'm very much not in favor of, like the fentanyl as an example. Do you have, did you find in any of your research any exclusions for that or is it just a drug conviction? And am I wrong morally about it? I mean, is there some reason that, yeah. I mean, I kind of want to know.
I was surprised by that too, that it was favoring people that had drug convictions.
If it's marijuana, then I'm all for it because you should never have been convicted for that. But if it was something else, then that gives me some hesitancy.
Yep.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
I'm not sure. I could look, I could look that up for you though. I believe, I, I'd have to look it up. I mean, it's easily accessible, but I can get back to you with that. I know obviously the general goal is, is that there's many individuals who fall under the economic empowerment category who were unfairly arrested or unfairly charged or had unfair sentencing for cannabis-related crimes. So I think that's the intent of the law, whether the, it extends farther than that for just drug-related arrests in general, I don't know. I can.
Yeah, that'd be good to know for a meeting.
Can we in fact make that conditional on our own, that we would only apply that statement to marijuana offenses?
I think we can give, I mean, this is us giving our own priority to these applicants. So the state is running their own priority program and we can, so we can't stop them from doing that at the state level, but for our, for the advantages we want, I think we have control over that within certain limitations, but something like that, I don't think is a problem. Well, we will have ample opportunity. Oh, we're not done yet.
So I'm going to read 15 West U.S. Terrace. So a couple of things, you know, I think this process is really important and I think that, you know, that's why the ordinance committee all came, was to be able to speak to some of these things and help like create the foundation. So when we do have the joint hearing, we'll be able to be prepared. So, you know, I think this is an important piece of that process. You know, as, you know, one of the things that came up, for example, as, as we were talking that we hadn't discussed was, you know, requiring people to hold licenses for a certain period of time. So you couldn't just go to, if you're a person that would be empowered by this and get a license, start a business and then sell it immediately. Because I don't think that's the spirit of this. So that was just one of the things I wanted to. So that was just one of the things I wanted to put out there. And, you know, as far as our process goes, I think that we can tweak things as long as we don't significantly change the spirit of what was advertised, you know? So, there is room for some changes. Now, as far as this last piece, because you said, you know, you asked for feedback.
I do want, yeah.
And I would say that, yeah, cannabis offenses, I mean, if you, if you saw my presentation, you know how I feel about the equity piece of this and the history of prohibition and how it adversely affected certain populations. I would also argue that those populations were adverse and targeted as it related to other drugs as well. Just like the simplest, most, you know, easy example is the difference between, you know, prosecutions of cocaine and prosecutions of crack, and the minimum sentences for those two different drugs that were used by two different populations. And so, you know, while I'm not a fan of fentanyl either, you know, I think that sometimes when people are surviving, they are going to take the, what's available to them in their area to potentially try to survive. And, so I just want to put that out there. I don't know, I don't know if it's a disqualifier, if someone had, you know, other prior drug convictions or whatnot.
That's exactly what I want to, thank you. Because really, I'm worried, like, I'm trying to envision these people in my mind, because I like applying things to humans, because that's what happens to us to make sure that we're making the right decision about these things. And as I think about this, I do think that someone may have been prosecuted inappropriately, but I also think that there's even more than just the type of drug. There's an aspect to it of what they were doing. If they were convicted because they had a drug empire, for instance, that would weigh differently for me. I wouldn't feel strongly about someone that came forward like, yeah, I was in for 20 years, killed people.
Violence, I think, violence, I think would be a disqualifier.
You know? Let me open this one up, watch.
And I'm all for that. I think, you know, violence, you know, as it relates to those types of things, it could be disqualifying. But, you know, I mean, the irony is if someone is skilled at creating an empire, then they might be a good businessperson.
All right.
All right, thanks for getting this rolling.
That's a good one to, that's a good one to end on, I think. So, I guess the motion is to schedule a public hearing on this.
For May 7th?
For May 7th.
I motion to schedule a public, a joint public hearing with the ordinance subcommittee on May 7th for this issue of cannabis equity.
A second?
All in favor? Wait, hold on.
Just, so, just for clarification purposes, to schedule the public hearing requires a legal ad. There's a draft legal ad in front of the planning board here. My presumption is that there would be a set of, there would be some text that would be the subject of that public hearing. So the question is, for the purposes of that public hearing, do you want there to be any changes to the proposed text as provided by the ordinance subcommittee? Or?
This is a draft that's being kept in the office, right? For people to come get copies of?
Whether there's any changes to this draft language before we post the advertising.
I mean, I don't think there's any reason you can't, also, I mean, I think we talked about a couple of different things here that might be worth researching and putting draft language together. I don't know that I would change what's there, like, still provide that draft as well. It's all up for discussion.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm okay with the way the language reads. I'm still not necessarily, at this point, in favor of three available for equity applicants.
Well, we're far from approving this language. We're simply saying this is the starting point for the discussion.
Right, but this is how it would run.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm fine with that.
All right, and I am as well. So I have to understand that this will be the proposed language that will be for public review, subject to all the fun debates that will happen at the public hearing.
With puns.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right.
So was there a time set?
We didn't say 6:15, we just said it would be on May 7th.
Okay, I think that's fine for the motion, okay. All right.
Okay, all right.
For accommodating so many questions.
No problem, that's the point. Moving right along, for the board to continue review and discussion of the zero lot line in the Mill Industrial Amendment and request to schedule public hearing on May 7th, 2019. So Jeff, you want to update us on where we are with this process?
Yes.
I read it, I'm in favor, I say we'll just go.
I should always take people's opportunity when they present that. I just, what I wanted to just explain to the board to make sure that it was clear, so I think what members, Arvis just mentioned, is that there is an additional element that has been proposed to be added to this amendment. So it starts off as being a zero lot line in the Mill Industrial District. One of the other mill owners was made aware of the discussion and believes that there could be additional flexibility while we're doing this. So, I'm a, a mass of paperwork here, so I have to find the right packet, but in a nutshell, we started with zero lot lines, so that relates to setbacks. While the planning board and ordinance subcommittee are looking at this, there's an opportunity to create the maximum amount of flexibility for properties in the Mill District. And so what the additional proposal would be, would be to remove a frontage requirement, make, we need to double-check the area requirement and reduce or eliminate the lot coverage requirement. So, there is an image in the packet, so the owner of Eastworks was the owner who has identified two, two proper, two parts of his property that have been, you know, something that he's desired to redevelop. And the creation of a lot around these buildings would allow him similar flexibility to sell the parcel. And there's a lot of funding mechanisms that get triggered by having the ability to carve off a lot that could be separately owned. And what that would require is continuing to make minor adjustments to the table, table 6-1 and 6-2. The amendment itself is very easy. It just strikes out the requirement for 120 feet of frontage in the Mill District.
What's the downside? I mean, these are just mill buildings anyway, they're already existing.
Well, we're not saying it for just exist, I mean, I think there's a lot of considerations that we have to think, I mean, one of the things that I still didn't see in here was a change for where you're abutting a residence. We've talked about where we're abutting a residential district, but we have residences in those zones, which I think is one consideration. But also, it's not, it's not for existing construction, if only, it would be for new construction, too. So, I mean, it, I mean, if you think about a building that doesn't have frontage, it's an isolated lot that doesn't have frontage on a public way. So, I mean, there's a reason that these requirements, I mean, our mill districts are somewhat unique from the rest of town and from most towns that don't have mills, but there's a reason for all these requirements historically, and some of it is just tradition, and some of it, there's legitimate basis. So I think we got to get into all of that, but I certainly think we should look at all this while we're doing the deep dive.
I agree.
So the, the goal here isn't to decide it now, it's to set up a public hearing.
Right.
Correct.
Also on May 7th.
Do we not want to do this on the same night as the one we just talked about? That was my other question. Is it better to spread these out? But May 7th is a regular hearing night, too, right?
It is.
As of right now, the board would have one application for that.
Does it make sense for us to do the cannabis and our application, they said, have to do this on the 21st? Or do we want to try to get both done in one night? I mean, I don't know how much we're going to need to do on both of these, but...
I want to throw out, too, that there may be, you know, but there may be more urgency for the project with the mills than there is for the equity, which is terrible. I don't believe I just said that.
Yeah, there, yes, where we do not have an equity applicant waiting for the amendment, we do have an urgency for the Mill District. And I understand the comment that we do need to take a look at this. So I would be urging to start the public hearings at the same night so that the, any questions or issues can be identified and researched further if necessary, or if, for this one, for example, if this can be clarified and determined, I think with the specific focus of, you know, how this might affect an existing residential use in the district, that's something that we can analyze pretty quickly. You know, there seems like there could be a chance that this would be something that the planning board could vote upon on the 7th. You know, because the process continues, it needs to go back to full city council as well. So, I'd like to have, my request would be that they both start on the 7th.
Okay.
And then, from there, be continued if they need another date.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, I just want to be clear on what the scope of this would be currently. So I apologize, because there's two versions going around.
Well, so the draft that you gave us has amended East Hampton zoning ordinance, section 6, table 6-1 and 6-2, to eliminate the setback lot area coverage and frontage requirements for new lots in the Mill Industrial District.
Right, so that is the scope. So I just want to make sure that the, there is an annotated, lined, you know, track change version that shows those changes as well.
But the front, the frontage is not part of it, is that what I'm understanding? Oh, there it is, actually, 14 seconds.
Yeah, the frontage was in this last one. So that would be, when somebody comes to you and asks what's being talked about at the May 7th hearing, you can hand them a copy of that.
Yep, and then the maximum building coverage is just proposed to be removed unless there's some other number that gets plugged in there at the public hearing.
I don't, I think this is just scheduling a public hearing. I don't think we need to open this to public comment, but I'm happy to do that if people... Is there anybody who has any comments or questions on this issue right now? With the understanding that there will be hours of other opportunities for you to ask those questions. All right.
So with, with the ordinance committee members here, is it worth just clarifying what we're talking about? So is everyone on the same page? We're talking about two public hearings on May 7th, 6...
You guys are okay being here till 11 o'clock that night?
6 and 6:15, and then...
Salem's eyes got big. Okay, yeah, okay.
I motion for the board to continue review and discussion of the zero lot line. And I'm, I am in a joint public hearing at the 7th at 7:00.
7?
7 o'clock, is that what we're saying? We have 6:15.
6, right? So 7, it seems like smart, plus it sounded good, because that's what was in the movie, 7th at 7:00.
Well, we always do the trick with timed items.
It's always hard, right? So if we do that, we run the risk of having 20 minutes to kill if we somehow get through the...
I'm in my motion to make it be 6:30.
30.
6:30, okay.
6, but, okay, I'll second that.
What's your hesitation?
Well, the other one's at 6:15.
No, we said, we didn't say a time for the first one.
We didn't say the other time, okay, so...
In fact, we don't have to set a time for either of them, do we? We're just going to put on our agenda?
No, for the legal ad, they have to be set, they should be set with a time. So it was 6:30.
So 6 for the cannabis and 6:30 for zero lot lines. I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstaining.
He voted.
All right. You're a fan, that's good. All right, moving right along, no old business, requested planning board opinion from the ZVA. Historically, we do not opine on those applications, and we let people...
Well, what is it?
Use of existing automotive service station to add convenience store at 317 Main Street.
You summarized, yeah?
I mean...
So, I mean, usually what we say is that the ZVA is going to hear all the evidence, they'll be better positioned to opine on that and let them do their thing. But if someone wants to, we can talk about that.
I'm fine with it.
All right.
That was interesting.
Nothing especially you want to add, nothing dramatic.
Is that, no, this is good, this is my first time doing that. So that is how...
We've handled everything.
Historically, we have said, you know, all we get is a paper application. We, we had a few where we started looking at them more in-depth, and we would have questions. We don't even have an applicant here, and the ZVA is a fully capable and competent board, and they hear all the evidence, and why would we second guess? No, it doesn't.
That's, I don't think, and that's how we handle it.
So that's what we've done, everyone, but I tend to give people the opportunity, if people have looked at it, to say, this is a bad idea, we've never really done that. But I can imagine a scenario where somebody named Harry really wants to write down...
Now I got a question.
How dare you!
It's absolutely right to do it, they can do it, because they get the information and we don't.
Right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Harry, aye.
Thank you all.
Wait, we second that.